Good evening. Today is May 7, 2025 at 6:00 p.m. We start the Planning Commission meeting by Royal.
Commissioner Walbert.
I'm here.
Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Commissioner Tran.
Ah, here.
Vice Chair Bowie.
Yes.
Chair Hamadi.
Here.
Chair Uwe Le Quorme.
Yes, we go to number two. Item seven, the flag. You please join me in throwing our flag.
Mr. Henry Hart, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Staff would like to pull the minutes for this meeting and defer them to the next meeting. And written communications were received and placed on the dais for all the commissioners and placed in the lobby for the public.
The sound is not that clear.
Yeah, our little speakers aren't working on the dais.
Yeah, it's not that clear at all.
So it's hard to hear you. And it'll probably be hard to hear.
Is this better?
Yeah.
No?
No, it's the little speakers.
They're not on.
Yeah, they aren't working.
They're working when we're talking to the mics.
I think the mics are working through the speaker box, but your mic is not coming through the speakers.
Okay, well, maybe they can.
Just as test, is this one working?
Yep.
No.
Still not working.
No?
No. Does this one come through? No?
It's a little easier to understand.
This is clear? Yeah, better? So staff is requesting to pull item 7.1 from tonight's meeting. And written communications were received and placed on the dais and also copies were placed in the lobby for the public.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move to number four, ex parte communication. Anyone wish to speak on this?
Yes, Chair. I did visit the site for item 8.1, and I also received an email from a resident on item 8.1.
And what else?
I have a chance to read it, the site in the 8.1.
That's it. I did as well. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move to number five, number six, number five, sorry, special presentation, there's none.
There are none.
We'll go to number six.
Oral communications, we have Terry Rains speaking.
Okay, you want to read the.
Yes, we'll read that into record. This is the time of the meeting that members of the public may address the Planning Commission on matters of public interest which pertain to the city and are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. Members of the public wishing to address public hearing items shall do so at that time of the public hearing. Unless extended by a majority vote of the Planning Commission, comments shall be limited to three minutes per speaker. To address the Planning Commission, please complete a blue request to speak form that is provided at the entrance to the council chambers and submit the form to the Planning Commission clerk. When your name is called, please step to the podium at that time and state your name and city of residence for the record. We have Terry Rains speaking.
Okay, we can open the oral communication. Go ahead.
Hello, item 7.1. I sent an email about the minutes and received no response. The vote teller for 8.3 is wrong, it should be motion to deny, carried 3-1, not 1-3. Commissioner Hamadi recused himself believing that he lived within 500 feet of the proposed indoor pickleball site, but he doesn't. I emailed three radius maps to staff and copied Walbert and Hamadi, showing his house is not within 500 feet of that site. I asked who advised Hamadi and what program was used, but received no response. When a commissioner recuses, they must leave before the item is presented, discussed, or voted on. Hamadi didn't rescuse himself until after staff's presentation. 7.2, there should be two separate agenda items because it's two actionable, separate resolutions for two separate cases. Pull this and discuss each one separately. I raised concerns at that meeting about denying cases with no findings, but it was ignored. Staff is now trying to CYA by creating retro findings. These findings conflict with staff's original findings, recommendations, and the commission's discussions. City attorney, I question the legality of backdating the resolutions which say denied and adopted the second day of April 2025. The attestations even wrongly certify that the resolutions were adopted on April 2nd. You can't legally change the record of official commission action even if it was an error. You should not have denied case 2024-220, a liquor license upgrade mainly to sell low alcohol-ready-to-drink beverages for junctions store at the Shell station at 8990 Tulsa. Facts, approval would not increase off-sale licenses in the tract. Two, store is in an average crime area. Three, no alcohol-related calls for service. Four, WPD does not oppose this license upgrade with the recommended conditions of approval. It's not convenient for gas station customers to drive to the supermarket or liquor store at that center to pick up items. Have you been to that center and endured the utter chaos trying to park? That liquor store, like others nearby, operates more like a gambling hall than a liquor store. And why is it okay to sell a 22-ounce single beer but not a 12, 16, or 20-ounce beer? Vote no on this denial resolution and reverse your position. I'm neutral on the 7-Eleven case because the crime area is significantly higher and there have been alcohol-related calls for service, but it doesn't seem fair to allow nearby 7-Elevens to sell alcohol, but not this one. Walbert, Bowie, and Hamadi approved Lavender's liquor license upgrade last year even with documented violations of law, but not these two, well, except Hamadi's, so wrong. 7.3, vote yes to uphold the denial of this case, changes to law should be initiated by the council or commission, period. Section four still wrongly states deny the proposed ordinance as provided in attachment, exhibit one, there's no ordinance attached, plus the same backdating legal issue I raised for 7.2. Chair Hamadi, per code, you effectively resigned your seat last year due to chronic absenteeism, yet here you sit as chair. Commissioner Tran, you didn't say one word at the last meeting except to carry out your assignment to vote for Allen and Tony. So with all due respect, why are you here? Thank you.
Anyone else?
No.
Close the oral communication, we go to the next one, consent calendar. We're going to vote separately on each item. We're going to go to 7.2. Any motion?
Chair, if the commission so chooses if they want to split up the two resolutions in 7.2, you may do that also.
Okay.
Whatever, that's the vote of the commission because if you want, or you can take them all as one, or you can take 7.2 as one and vote.
Okay. Discussion.
No, I'd move approval of item 7.2.
Give me a second. Was there, I'm sorry, was there a second?
No.
I think on the consent calendar, you only need one vote.
No, no, you have, you still have to have, even if it's a consent calendar, you still would need a second.
Okay.
And Commissioner Anderson, I didn't hear what you said.
Oh, yes, to vote in favor of case, to approve case number 2024-2020 and 2024-0176.
And the second?
I do second it.
For clarification, Commissioner Anderson, are you moving to approve or just to approve the resos as written?
Yes.
Approve the resos as written?
Yes.
Chair, I have a question. On this consent calendar, are we voting on it as one block or are you choosing unilaterally to split them up? Normally with a consent calendar, it's just one vote on all items under item number seven? Are we, you know, right, unless one of the commissioners pull one of those items, are you pulling them individually or how is this going to work?
Yep, well, at this point, I thought we had, I thought there was discussion to pull this as a separate item, no? Defer to the attorney, what was?
So, Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
What was your direction, was your direction to the commission to take each item separately and pull them?
I think we should take it separately, each one.
Okay. So you're just voting on 7.2?
Yes, we're going on 7.2 right now.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Anderson, seconded by Vice Chair Bowie to approve item 7.2. Commissioner Walbert.
I'm going to abstain.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Tran.
I abstain.
Vice Chair Bowie.
Yes.
Chair Hamadi. Motion carries 3-2.
Okay, we go to the next one now?
Yeah, just a question first, this was the one that we had considered at our last meeting, Ken, and this was, staff was recommending at that point to talk, to make some changes to allow staff to make certain decisions rather than having them come to the Planning Commission for consideration?
Correct, it wasn't the last meeting, it was the first meeting in April, but this was the staff initiation of zoning code amendments.
Right, and at that meeting, there was, it was carried forward on a 3-1, right?
It was denied 3-1.
Denied 3-1, right, okay.
And so for clarification, it's item 7.3.
Correct. Yes.
Chair, can I ask staff a question, please? Why is this on our calendar? Can you explain that? Because it seems just, I mean, what's the purpose behind it? Because I don't, you know, it seems like there's a lot of confusion. Why are we voting on this again? Is this just to approve the wording of the resolution because it was denied?
Correct, this is a resolution of denial, the one where you were taking to the meeting was a resolution of recommendation of approval. So you couldn't actually approve the reso as written at the last meeting because it was an approval or a recommendation approval, so we are bringing back a resolution of denial. So it is the exact same wording, it is just reversed to be denied the application.
So the previous resolution saying it was a denial doesn't, wouldn't count? You actually need this for record? This is some kind of paper situation?
Correct.
Okay.
It's memorializing the vote as done so that the resolution property reflects how the commission viewed it.
I move approval.
I make second for.
We have a motion by Chair Hamadi, seconded by Vice Chair Bowie to approve item 7.3. Commissioner Walbert.
I'm going to abstain.
Commissioner Anderson.
No.
Commissioner Tran.
I'm going to abstain as well.
Vice Chair Bowie.
No.
Chair Hamadi.
Yes.
Motion denied. One-four.
I mean, if we voted at the beginning on denial of this, I don't understand why would they reverse it? Right now, all vote against it.
Yeah, and you cannot reverse this?
Yeah.
Because there's no public hearing. So this does not become, this doesn't change?
So the four votes before, it's going to count?
Well, it'll move, it'll still go to council because this is only a recommendation from the commission. We'll have to check with the attorney how we'll word that as far as decision of the commission.
Got it.
If it goes to council, it may be without a resolution since there wasn't one that was approved.
Yeah.
And I think you could, we can have the discussion or discussion with the city attorney exactly how to bring it forward if that's where it's going.
Okay, I guess we'll close the, we'll go to the next item, public hearing, number eight.
Anyone wishing to speak on an open public hearing should complete a blue request to speak form that is provided at the entrance of the council chambers and submit the form to the Planning Commission clerk. When your name is called, please step to the podium and state your name and city of residence for the record. Each attendee will have three minutes to comment on each public hearing item. The applicant or their designee will have 12 minutes to speak and will also be provided a three-minute rebuttal with exception of the applicant or designee. All attendees may only speak once. The Planning Commission may use its discretion to allow a speaker to exceed the allotted time or may ask a speaker to return to answer additional questions.
Item 8.1, case number 2024-0303. Staff, please.
Associate Planner Zafar Rangbar will be presenting for staff.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. Tonight's presentation involves the planning case number 2024-0303, a request for a conditional use permit for type 21 ABC license on a property located at 16450 Beach Boulevard. The project is within C2 zoning district general business and to the south, the site is developed with an elementary school zone, public semi-public district, and a vacant lot which is on for multifamily residential. To the east is developed with a single-family homes in R1 zoning district. The project is located within multi-tenant commercial site Pavilion Place Shopping Center, which is a 7.3 multi-tenant complex, 7.3-acre multi-tenant complex with retails, restaurants, and services. The proposed use H-Mart supermarket would occupy the vacant space at this location. The previous tenant, Vons Market, had operated with a valid conditional use permit for type 21 ABC license, but the license is expired due to inactivity for more than one year. The applicant is seeking an approval of a conditional use permit for type 21 off-sale ABC license. Also, ABC requires the city to make public convenience or necessity, PCN determination. This is the floor plan for the supermarket. The beer, wine, and distill sprays will be stored in drink coolers and on shelves within the general sales area, shown on yellow color on the map. And the excess alcoholic beverages will be stored in a lockable storage area that is out of the reach of customers, shown in orange color on the plan. This aerial map shows the overview of the nearest off-sale alcohol licenses. There are 11 other establishments within the census tract currently have active ABC licenses, as shown in this map. The proposed supermarket, H-Mart, will be the 12 active off-sale ABC license in the tract if approved. When an alcohol license sells alcoholic beverages in census tracts which are oversaturated, ABC requires the cities to make public convenience or necessity determination. ABC determined that the subject census tract allows two off-sale licenses before becoming oversaturated. As it was shown on previous map, currently there are 11 other establishments within the census tract having active off-sale ABC licenses. This is common in commercial-dominated census due to the grouping of retail stores and restaurants. The proposed CUP would serve the public convenience and necessity by providing a one-stop destination for customers, allowing them to purchase groceries and alcoholic drinks in the same trip without having to make multiple stops. Westminster Police Department has responded to 550 incidents in the parking areas of the center with the majority of those calls related to petty and grand thefts, including vehicle break-ins. Also, to mitigate any crime issues, the shopping center has contracted a private security firm to patrol the parking areas. Westminster Police Department finds the request for a type 21 license for the proposed supermarket reasonable and has provided conditions of approval to deter potential This project is categorically exempt pursuant to Class 1, Section 15301 of CEQA pertaining to the operation permitting and licensing of an existing private structure or facility. In conclusion, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve planning case number 2024-0303 and make convenience determination for alcohol license subject to recommended conditions of approval in the draft resolution. This concludes the presentation for case 2024-0303, and I can answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
As I read through the notes, the police department requests that we add to the approval to install cameras.
Yeah, correct, that was one of their conditions of approval.
And also, if it's a constant problem, they have to hire a security also as well.
I'm sorry, what was?
If it becomes also, if like the theft of alcohol, they also need to hire, any condition should be imposed on them to hire a security guy, guard.
So they do have a security guard that will roam the parking lot?
No, they're talking about.
And H-Mart themselves keeps a private security guard inside the market?
Okay.
I have some questions.
What is the maximum type 21 in a rare area that allow? Do you know? Because right now, there's quite a bit more than.
So there is no maximum. What the census tract says is based on population and some other concerns, they allow two. However, this census tract is the majority commercial, so we have more retail stores grouped together, including supermarkets, so there are more licenses in the tract. ABC will let you have, they don't have a cap, they will let you keep issuing licenses as long as the city makes that finding it's a public convenience and necessity. So there is no maximum they can have.
I see, thank you.
Question on the census tract, that's served by two police departments, correct? Westminster and Huntington?
Correct, both.
Okay, and your numbers and figures for the incident calls, it was 500 and something for that census tract, something like that? Is that solely Westminster PD or does that include Huntington's numbers as well?
That's only Westminster, we don't reach out to Huntington Beach. And that is because it is a large commercial center with the Target.
Yep.
The memo said most of those calls were related to petty theft, grand theft from Target or from vehicle burglaries in the parking lot.
Gotcha, and there's, correct me if I'm wrong, three total type 21 licenses in Westminster in that census tract?
It's in both.
The restaurant in Huntington?
Yeah, Huntington and Westminster, yeah.
Right, but just in Westminster, there's three, is that correct?
Yes, the H-Mart, the Target, and the City Market.
Yeah.
And the City Market.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then last question I had, it seems like there's only two conditions from the Westminster Police Department on the CUP versus the last two that came in front of us. Police Department on the CUP versus the last two that came in front of us had dozens of conditions. Are we just talking to different police, different people within the department that are answering these questions? Why are we getting such variation between different CUPs for the same thing?
So we use the same consultant for all, all of our cases to go to police. That's Bruce Ram. The difference in this case is because our consultant in Westminster PD, even planning, look at convenience stores different than a full-fledged market. There are greater conditions placed on convenience stores because those are normally the stores we have more issues at. The supermarkets themselves are not normally problematic. So there's, we don't place as many conditions on those for selling alcohol.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Let's just speak on this? Okay, we're going to open the public here.
Did the applicant want to come speak? Okay. We have Will Nieves.
Yes, good evening. Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Will Nieves. Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing me to come before you to speak. I'd also like to thank staff for bringing this project forward to the planning commission. As stated, this is a very large-sized specialty market called H-Mart. H-Mart has over 80 supermarket stores throughout the country in 14 different states. They employ over 5,300 people. This market is actually 69,445 square feet in size, which is a very, very large market. It used to be Von's Pavilion in the past. There was a 21 license on the premise that did expire due to inactivity. The hours of operation that we're proposing are actually less than what the Von's had. We're only proposing hours of operation from 8:00 AM till 10:00 PM daily. This will eliminate the late-night problems that most markets have with people coming in and purchasing and drinking in the vehicles and so forth. And this is not one of your typical markets that you see, that you've been having a lot of problems with. To give you a little bit of information on how census tracts work is that census tracts are based on the residential population in the census tract. And ABC, what they do is they break down the census tract based on the population and there has to be so many licenses issued based on that residential population. For instance, if there was a census tract that was strictly commercial, then there would be zero licenses allowed because there's no residents in the area. So that's why there's no maximum number of people or number of licenses that can be issued within the census tract because commercial areas are grouped along commercial corridors and in certain regional shopping centers. And there typically aren't a lot of residents within that area. So that's why a lot of these ratios are off when you start looking at how many are allowed and how many exist. It's really, to me, not a fair way of assessing it, but that's the only thing that they have. We did get support from the police department. As mentioned, we do have a private security within the supermarket. We have our own security company. The shopping center itself also has roving security on a 24/7 basis that always patrols the property. So there would be no issues. And again, the 10:00 PM closing time really eliminates any problems. I don't have any other quest, any other things to add. If you have any questions or concerns, I can answer them for you now.
When do you anticipate the store opening?
The store right now is presently undergoing its reconstruction and reconfiguration. They've taken everything out that was there before and they're putting in everything new, the gondolas and the areas that they're proposing to, to place their retail vendors in there. I expect it's going to be about a couple of more months before it's open.
Okay, thank you.
Will you inform us before the opening?
Yes, a couple of months.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Any questions?
Thank you very much. Any other speakers?
We have Terry Rains speaking.
Hello, Terry Rains. What program mapped properties within 500 feet of this site for noticing? Hopefully not the same one that wrongly found Chair Hamad's home to be within 500 feet of the recent indoor pickleball project. What's amazing, this CUP only has seven conditions of approval for this new type 21 license versus 29 to 32 conditions for type 21 upgrades for two convenience stores this commission just denied. So much for public convenience. The CUP conditions are numbered wrong as they were for Jackson's Food Store CUP. Conditions should be numbered sequentially regardless of source. The PD conditions should just numerically continue after the planning conditions. Why? Because after, when reviewing or enforcing CUPs, the condition number in text is usually cited. Two condition ones and two condition twos is problematic. Again, these official documents must be formatted consistently across the organization regardless of who prepares them. Before executing the CUP, staff should renumber the PD conditions as number six and seven. Going forward, please ensure conditions are numbered correctly and consistently. The ABC and the city need to correct the census tract saturation limit calculations. If you take the tract population of 4835 divided by the allowable 1665 persons per license, the true mathematical result is 2.9. That result should not be truncated. It should be rounded mathematically to three licenses, not two. The saturation limits are generally flawed. This is a large commercial center in a tract with low population, hence the artificially low, well, three with real math, saturation limit, which is not realistic. The city should strive to impose conditions that are consistent for similar businesses and locations. There are 11 active off-sale licenses in this census tract with a saturation limit of two or three if you use the real math. All but one are type 21. The type 20 is now, the now closed 99 cent store. There are a variety of grocery, specialty, alcohol, liquor and convenience stores with type 21 in this track, including a 7-Eleven. I mention this because this commission just denied another 7-Elevens type 21 upgrade for a store just a mile down the road. Police District 42 has a crime rate of 175, 45% higher than average. WPD has responded to 550 incidents in this center, mostly related to thefts and vehicle break-ins. Oversaturation in large commercial centers is common due to the grouping of retail stores and restaurants so close together. WPD finds this request for a type 21 license reasonable and provided just two conditions of approval accordingly despite the high crime rate and oversaturation. I agree. So please approve the CUP and PCN finding. A February meeting request email from Interim Director Vanderdusen stated, "With the recent influx of type 20 to type 21, planning would like to start a discussion regarding alcohol licenses within the city and the makings of findings for PCNs." I'd really like to know what the real agenda was and the real discussion was during that meeting. Thank you so much.
Any other speakers?
There are no other speakers.
Okay, we can close the public here. Any motions? I move approval.
I make a motion for it.
With the conditions though. I move approval with the condition of the police department with the cameras being installed.
I do, I do have a question. Ken, on the, the questions that were just raised regarding numbering the conditions, is that an issue or how does that, how's that resolved?
Staff doesn't see it as an issue. They're clearly labeled as different. It would be an issue if it went 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 1, 2 with no split. But because there's a, there's a definite split and you can see that the conditions are from a different body, either way would be correct.
Okay, thank you.
We have a motion on the table. I made the motion with the recommendation with the police department installing of cameras.
Do we have a second?
Yes, I would like to make a second for it.
Can I make a substitute motion?
Go for it.
I would actually like to change the resolution and instead of putting WPD standards because they're going to be approved by the planning commission, I would like it to just say standards. These are things that they have to keep. Doesn't really matter what the source was based upon the recommendation of the WPD. So I'd actually like to renumber those in the resolution six and seven instead of one and two and take out that WPD standards condition. You can notate in the language, install cameras, that should just be a condition and it can say based upon the police department, but it doesn't need to be delineated like that. So I'd like to make a substitute motion to renumber those six and seven and get rid of WPD standards.
Was there a second to?
Any second to it?
To the first motion?
We have Tony second the first motion.
There is.
Any second to Mr. Casey?
Yeah, yeah, I'll second that. That's fine.
Okay, roll call.
Just so you know, just for clarification.
We have two on the motion.
So you're, you're going to vote on the substitute motion, Commissioner Wolpert's motion? That's the motion you're voting on, which is approval with the change to the numbering of the conditions and removal of the WPD label of standards. That's what you're voting on.
That's fine, yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Wolpert?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tryon?
Oh, yes.
Vice Chair Bowie?
Yes.
Chair Hamad?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Go now to staff report, number nine, regular business.
Chair Hamad first. So the commission's action on this item shall become effective 15 days after the decision date identified in the notice of decision. The applicant and/or any other interested party may file an appeal of the commission's action to the city council. The appeal must be in writing and filed with the city clerk within the previously mentioned 15-day period. Thank you.
So we have number nine, regular business.
All right, thank you, Chair. Staff is bringing before you a request to initiate a zoning code amendment to amend section 17.230, industrial zoning districts of the Westminster Municipal Code with respect to the permitted and conditionally permitted uses. We don't have a presentation for this one. This one should be pretty straightforward, so we're going to just go without it. We're requesting to amend the permitted and conditional uses allowed in the M1 light industrial and M2 medium industrial zones. We've recently had some requests wondering if certain uses are permitted or conditionally permitted in the area that staff has issues with. We don't think they're necessarily good for the city or their uses that we can't necessarily allow that we believe would be good for the city, but the zoning code doesn't allow them. So staff is just asking for permission to redo the uses while we're in there. We'll make sure there's no other errors that are, so there's no other grammatical errors, things we need to clean up, make sure everything conforms to state law, but we'll mainly be looking at just the use table within that section.
Okay.
I have a question.
Go for it.
Like what?
We're looking, we've had a few manufacturing requests that we can't necessarily allow based on our code because the code is very specific to what kind of manufacturing it allows. So if it's outside of those, it gets a little tricky for us. We also right now permit by right, storage facilities, which is not necessarily the best use to have in an industrial area, especially if we're permitting it by right with no conditions on it. So those are the two that have come up lately. So as long as we have the opportunity, we wanted to move forward with making sure we're clear on those and seeing what else, if there's any other uses that we need to clear up. And this would come back to the planning commission for recommendation of approval before it went to council.
And can you speak to the Kennedy Commission, one page that we got late communication?
Yeah, we did receive that. That would not apply in this place where, in this case, we are not looking to add residential uses. We're simply looking to clean up the industrial uses. Westminster has a very limited industrial base. We want to protect that and make sure that the uses that go in are fitting for the city and benefit the city. So in this case, we have plenty of zones that are already zoned for residential. We don't see the need to add residential in our industrial zones.
Are you going to allow mixed use within the zone M1 and 2 zone?
We are not looking for any residential, we're not looking to add residential. We're just looking to clean up the uses for industrial.
Okay.
Can the attachment that you have, table, it's the tables showing what's currently permitted and how it's permitted and what's not permitted?
Yes.
That's attached. Now, if this is approved by the planning commission and city council, when it comes back to the commission, will it also show the existing and what's proposed to be changed? So there would be, items would be lined out if it's going to be deleted and it would be highlighted in a different color if it was, if it was being added so we can see what the changes would be?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any one, have any more questions?
Okay. I'd move approval.
I second.
Roll call.
I'm sorry, who seconded that?
Casey.
We have a motion by Commissioner Anderson, seconded by Commissioner Wolpert to approve case number 2024-0303, a CUP to approve an off-sale general license, ABC type 21 license, including a public convenience or necessity determination for new.
No.
No, that's not. Sorry about that. We have a motion by Commissioner Anderson, seconded by Commissioner Wolpert, recommending the planning commission adopt resolution 2025-011, a resolution of intention entitled, "A Resolution of Intention of the Planning Commission of the City of Westminster, California, Initiating a Zoning Code Amendment to amend Chapter 17.230 Industrial Zoning District." I will call roll. Commissioner Wolpert?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tryon?
Oh, yes.
Vice Chair Bowie?
Yes.
Chair Hamad?
Yes.
5-0, motion carries.
Number 10 reports as none. Number 11, matter from staff?
Staff has nothing at this time.
Okay, thank you. Matter from the planning commission, including AB 1234 reports weren't required. Anything?
A question for, for staff. Our next regular planning commission, our, our next regular planning commission meeting, are there items agendized at this time or going to be coming to us for our next regular meeting? Do you know?
The next regular meeting will be the first meeting in June. We will be canceling the second meeting in May. Okay, so now, we don't have items for that one. We currently, we're looking to bring one of the zoning code amendments back in June. We're still working out with lawyers exactly which one we'll have ready, but we will have one ready. There are a few other projects that we, we're looking to bring, including a warehouse building. So we should at least have the two items, possibly three.
For the first meeting in June.
For the first meeting in June.
Thank you.
You have a question? Do we have a backlog of the hearing from the people? Because I heard many people, they complained that they submit the things and it took really more than six months to get the CUP or get the hearing. What is the backlog of our city?
The, the planning department is running quite a few cases. We don't have a backlog of CUPs. This, the two that we brought in April and this one, those are the CUPs we have at this time. We do have some development projects. Those by nature take longer because we're working with architects to clean up designs and site plans. It's not something they can fix instantly. But as far as CUPs, we do not have a backlog at this time.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just one quick comment. Item like, all the items under agenda item seven for the consent calendar, I think it might be beneficial for the commission if it's explained exactly what the process and procedure is for those, if they come up again. This is the first time in the last two and a half years we've ever had any kind of consent calendar items. And I think there was probably some confusion that it could have been much, much cleared up before we even got here tonight, whether that was individual calls to commissioners or emails going out, just explaining what these items were so that we could understand them a little bit better and be able to make better decisions on those. Because I think there was some pretty, pretty good confusion at the beginning of the meeting.
All right, that's noted and we will, we will take that into account. We don't anticipate consent calendar becoming a regular thing. It was just with the resolutions, we wanted to push those to you, so.
Okay. At 6:43, thank you.